The clerk please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Hannaford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
All right. Item four is acknowledgment of unopposed filings by Kelly Parker, Mayor, Melody Thiedman, City Clerk, Jim Scribner, City Marshal, Connor Martin, Ward 1, seat 2, Brandon Sherman, Ward 2, seat 2, Mary Hamilton, Ward 3, seat 2, and Randy Stelling, Ward 4, seat 2.
Would you like to make a motion?
No.
No motion. Just call your people up front.
All right. And item five is swearing-in ceremony for Kelly Parker, Mayor, Melody Thiedman, City Clerk, Jim Scribner, City Marshal, Connor Martin, Ward 1, seat 2, Brandon Sherman, Ward 2, seat 2, Mary Hamilton, Ward 3, seat 2, and Randy Stelling, Ward 4, seat 2. Ladies and gentlemen?
Do you want to do that here so they can get a picture? Or he wants to present to you something else?
All right. Do that.
Each of you raise your right hand. Do each of you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma, and that you will not knowingly receive, directly or indirectly, any money or other valuable thing for the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to your office, other than the compensation allowed by law. And do you further swear or affirm that you will faithfully discharge your duties for the position you've been elected to, the best of your ability?
I do.
Congratulations.
I'll send my wife after.
Ladies and gentlemen?
I get my $0.94 an hour to have a place in the first year.
Wait till the first year, Jim. You bet. Thank you. Congratulations. It's not your work. Unfortunately. That one is.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I left before I could say anything, so... All right. Item six is discussion and action to elect a council president for the city of Alva. Beau, I believe, are you the current?
I'm the current.
Council president?
Yes.
But every year, in the event that the mayor is unable to fulfill his responsibilities, whether for a short or long period of time, the council president would preside over meetings and conduct business on behalf of the mayor. It is a position that is chosen by the council members, from among the council members. So, you guys go ahead. Every odd number a year.
Okay.
You want me to take it, though?
Motion by Randy Stelling and second by Mary Hamilton to nominate Beau Hannaford to, or to elect Beau Hannaford as council president for the city of Alva. Is there any further discussion?
This is your time to speak.
All right. Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Well, it's good to be able to have everybody back for at least another couple years. And Mr. Scribner, Marshall Scribner, congratulations on yet another term as marshal. And we'll hopefully be able to continue with some of the stuff that we started, and onward and upward, and bigger and better. So, congratulations, everyone. Item seven is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 18, 2019. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of March 30, 2019. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $111,517.77 in payroll expenses of $246,159.47. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Have a motion by Brandon Sherman, and second by Daniel Winters, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Item nine, reports from staff. The item A is Alva Planning Commission meeting on March 25, 2019. Mrs. Hamilton?
I was still out in surgery. I'm not at 10:00.
You got missed it as well.
You were there for a little while. It was a pretty short meeting. We did discuss some of the strategic land use task force information, and I do not remember any of the remarks, if there were any remarks from the planning commission members. So, it was pretty routine.
Yeah, it was, yeah. No action was taken on anything.
Right.
Anybody have any questions about the planning commission meeting? All right. Item B is the Alva Hospital Authority Special Meeting on March 26 and April 9, 2019.
I don't know, April 9th, we didn't, is that the one we got moved to tomorrow?
We may have been.
I've got the report from March 26. Regular business, CEOs report, hired a couple new RNs and a new lab worker. Our credentialing, we had several that we approved. Most of them were telehospitalists. Heard a copy report, getting ready for our next survey, which will be going out in the next three to four months. Our improvement to patient care, we had several different assessments and policies and manuals that we approved. I think the big thing, I know Alva Review Courier did a good report on it, but I like hearing on Facebook, we have not lost all our doctors. We've, one doctor's left. Dr. Lawrence is still with us, moving to the ER, which is going to help us tremendously. He is going to see limited patients still. Of course, Dr. Self, all our mid-levels. So, we have started the process already. We have an interview coming up this month. I think another one's scheduled in August, and working on another interview that they're trying to set up as well. So, again, I appreciate that coverage, because I know that, I got a lot of phone calls and saw a lot of things from people on Facebook that we didn't have any doctors, and we do. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Does the council have any questions, Dr. Hannaford? Thank you. Item C is the Alva Public Library Board Special Meeting on April 8, 2019.
Okay. We, first off, we went over the budget, some of the new proposed ideas, obviously not finalized budget, but just some of the things that Director Hamilton was talking about. We talked about the Chocolate Fantasy, which is the annual event that the library holds. It was standing room only, and it raised about $12,000 for the Friends of Library, which she did not have the official numbers in front of her, but she thinks that's one of, if not the highest amount we've ever raised off of that event. Summer reading program starts first Monday of June. They're actually going to have two age groups for it this year, kindergarten through second, or what they call the non-reader group, and then a third through sixth grade group as well. And then on top of that, they'll have the Little Explorers Group, which is under five. So, any student that's not attending kindergarten can go to that as well. So, trying to fit the needs of all of our kids, not just a limited group. And then we did have a resignation from the board. Dr. David Kevorevic had decided to resign from the board. He had health and time issues, so we will have, obviously have to replace him, but we thank him for all of his years that he served on the board, and it was numerous. And then, if all of you guys know Larry Form, used to be the library director, he's apparently a hospital in Pawhuska, so if you want to send him a card or note or something, his address is available at the Public Library. He'll be returning, returning home sometime this month, but I'm sure he'd love to hear from everyone, so... That was, that was our meeting.
Council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? All right, thank you. Next item is the Alva Regional Airport Commission meeting on April 8, 2019. We did have our normal routine business. There is an item on this agenda with regard to the airport purchase over $25,000. There was no presentation for the upcoming flying in that's scheduled for this fall or late summer. We did approve terminal roof repairs in an amount not to exceed $8,928. And that's really about it. Are any questions regarding the airport meeting? Item E is the Finance Committee meeting on April 8, 2019.
15th.
15th. Dr. Hannaford?
So, we had a lengthy meeting, several items on the agenda today, but really started off with our claims list. Much of it this time was debt services and all our funds. Besides also, we had $10,000 we had for ambulance repair in our general fund. Of course, we had a water tower construction fund of $145,000. We talked, we first met with the ONG representatives about our franchise agreement. If you remember last time, we talked about the Finance Committee had a few concerns, some wording we liked, would like to get changed within the agreement. Feel like it was an agreeable situation for those. Joe Don's going to send those changes, and we'll get that back, and then start the process for a special election, and going through the process of getting that done pretty quick. We did find out that our plan for the pool, our multi-year plan, was approved finally. So, we did have some discussions again about possibly looking at getting with a financial and legal consultant, still looking at possibility of a geo-bond, what that might look like for possible financing. We also met, tonight we'll also have the presentation for our audit, met with Mr. Angel. And if you had a chance to look at it, very clean audit for the city. I'd like to say, great job to Joe Don and his staff, but no recommendations. All the findings from the previous year have been corrected, and we'll have opportunity for questions later on, but felt that that went very well. And really, from all of that, that's about as much time as we had to finish up, so I'm happy to answer any questions, or you can leave it to the experts here in just a little bit.
Council have any questions? The Finance Committee? Item F, thank you Beau. Item F is the City Mayor's report. It's been pretty busy. First, speak a little bit about the Lieutenant Governor's turkey hunt that occurred last week. I think Peggy did a pretty good job of covering some of the goings-on of that event, in addition to the 22 turkeys that were taken out of Northwest Oklahoma. Pretty productive in terms of economic development event as well. I know that I had the opportunity to spend a couple days with a representative from Google, and talking about some STEM opportunities in our community, and funding opportunities for communities like ours that, you know, we have a lot of similar interests in terms of our STEM programs in our community, as well as what they look for in community programs to support, so that was pretty exciting. Have some future conversations planned as well with regard to electronic vehicles and charging stations, and then I know a lot of other business contacts remain that happened with other leaders in our community as well. So, I think it was a good event. Lieutenant Governor did come on Wednesday evening and speak to everyone, and he acknowledged that, you know, there are 75 other counties in the state of Oklahoma besides Tulsa and Oklahoma counties that are open for business and worthy of our, you know, their support from 23rd and Lincoln. So, it was a good message that he shared with everybody, and hopefully that is the direction they go with their leadership, to do what they can to help bolster the economies out in our areas. So, there, coming up on that time of year, we're already welcoming a lot of visitors. We had the big bull battle thing going on in town. There was Ranger Spring Football Game was last week, or Saturday night. We had prom this week. We've got graduations coming up and other, many other events coming up in our community. And as always, I don't have to tell this group this, but roll out the red carpet when you see somebody you don't know, make them feel welcome, and that's how we, you know, gain the support of so many people and make them want to come back. I do want to say that, and Joe Don, I may steal a little bit of your thunder, but the city of Alva is looking for quality employees to come and work in our departments. We offer a very competitive wage and benefit package for businesses in our community, and if you're out there looking for a job, we would love to have you turn in an application so we can see if we can put you to work. There's a lot of work that needs done in our community, and we are not getting very many applications for those positions. And so, you know, maybe this will make the paper. I know we're advertising in the paper and several other places, trying to get some help, but the weeds are growing, and we've got a lot of work that needs to be done, and we need people to do those jobs. The last thing I'll mention in my report, as requested from the OHCE, the Oklahoma Home and Community Education Group, is a proclamation for Earth Day. So, by their request, "And whereas, April 22, 2019 is the 49th anniversary of Earth Day, founded by Gaylord Nelson, then a U.S. Senator from Wisconsin, and whereas the first Earth Day led to the creation of the Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of the Water and Endangered Species Act, and whereas Earth Day is now celebrated by millions of people worldwide, and whereas Earth Day offers citizens an unprecedented opportunity to commit to building a healthy planet and flourishing communities, and whereas Grow and Share Oklahoma, as Grow and Share, am I getting this right? Because I messed that up. Whereas Grow and Share Oklahoma Home and Community Education, OHCE Group, serving as the Resource Management Committee for Woods County, OHCE, strives to increase and promote action of individual families with emphasis on children and communities to establish daily habitats, or habits, to care for our environment through education and conservation, and whereas local OHCE groups have been challenged to plant a tree, flowers, or shrubs at a local nursing home, retirement home, or school, and whereas a poster contest will be held for Lincoln Elementary 5th graders to depict their understanding of Earth Day and its relevance to the environment, now therefore, we, Mayor Kelly Parker and the council members of the city of Alva, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2019 as Earth Day in the city of Alva, and we urge all citizens, businesses, and institutions to celebrate this special observance." Mary? I'm going to present, as a member of the OHCE, I'm going to present this to you.
Okay.
Council members, that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions there may be. Thank you. Item G is the City Business Manager's report.
Well, the first thing I'd like to kind of report on is, attended on April 3 via conference call, I attended the OML Legislative Committee meeting. A couple of things that came forth in that, in that meeting that we need to be watching for and observing of is, one, House Bill 1404, which is a gross protection tax on severance of rock, gravel, granite, sand, and limestone. This would be, if this bill were to pass, this would add an additional cost to the rock that we purchased, and the sand that we purchased to go toward the construction of streets. So, this is something we are actively opposing as the municipal league. Another thing that was pretty timely, I thought, was both Senate Bill 762 and House Bill 1885 deal with local bid acceptance preference. We don't have to have a law that reflects what we can do locally as far as bid preference acceptance. We can always accept the lowest and best bid, as long as we can define why it is the best bid. So, these are bills that we are opposing, just because we don't feel like they're needed, but they are related back to a lot of things that we are discussing locally right now. Projects that we have going on, the HVAC system is in the wrap-up stages. We've got to do our final walkthrough. We officially opened back up for business in our offices next door on April 6. We have a few little walkthrough things to do. Replacement of the water transmission line has been postponed until later on in the FY19-20 budget year. The swimming pool, as Beau, as Dr. Hannaford reported on earlier, we did get our official notification on Friday that said that accepted our proposed rehabilitation plan was approved. Staff will be meeting with the engineers and swimming pool experts to get things opened up. Right now, the way we, the way staff sees it, it is still possible that the pool will open up as planned in May. Depending on testing, because the Oklahoma Department of Health will have to come down and do some testing prior to us opening, and do some minor inspections of the stuff that we are installing this year. So, depending on those timeframes, we're going to hold it open as to when we're going to open, but it still is plausible that it is in May. The official start time for the coordination station, the contract date start time was April 1st. This project is moving forward, as is the wellfield rehabilitation project. Right now, both wells 64 and 66, which were taken offline during the E. coli scare, and have remained offline since then, we've been working to meet the DEQ established time, the work that DEQ has required us to be, to have done to open up those wells, and we still look forward to having that done by May 30. Water Department has spent most of their time working in the wellfield over the past month. One thing I would like to comment on is there were numerous calls in the city hall concerning an apparent water leak on College Avenue, east of Murray Drive. At the, on the onset of those investigations and those complaints, staff went out and looked at the issue and determined it to be an AT&amp;T manhole that groundwater was seeping out of. But we did have a citizen complained, Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality, they were down Friday to investigate, and found that it was groundwater. It was not anything that we could control or we were concerned about. They have given us a letter. That letter is out there in the drop box for you to look at if you still choose to. The reason we don't have the buildings that were on the last council meeting on this council meeting is after we sent out new letters to both the property owners, those letters were not picked up, so we could not put them on this agenda. The houses, the properties that 1437 Young and 924 Barnes have both been removed, and now we'll just have some mowing that we'll have to take care of. We will send out our notices on mowing for those. If they are not mowed, we will go mow them, and then I will instruct staff to spray the yards, to kill the weeds, and hopefully prevent much more mowing this summer. We do have several employees, several positions open. We've got a firefighter position open, grounds maintenance position out of DRC, parking building maintenance position, inmate supervisor position, a couple of general labor sanitation commissions, and both some full-time and part-time employees for EMS. We are still, also still looking for part-time employees at the airport for an attendant, some ARC attendants, and grounds maintenance employees as seasonal employees. To add to this, we are looking, we started today actively advertising for lifeguards. So, all of those positions are open, and we are accepting applications for them. Street Department had worked on milling and reprofiling 11th Street from Flynn to North Affair, and 12th Street from Flynn to Santa Fe. They fixed approximately 120 potholes last month with about five tons of asphalt. Millings off of the streets have been placed in alleys behind the 1200 block of Locust and Maple, and off the alley, the alley off Skyline Drive between Cherry and Oak Streets. Crews have been working on numerous other alleys, blading them and filling small holes with millings. Police Department, Fire Department have been busy with the things that they're typically busy with, fire runs and police runs. There were approximately 42, or there were 221 separate contacts made for the Police Department with 43 tickets, or 42 tickets and 179 warnings. The Fire Department made a, responded to 82 calls, ranging from structure fires to EMS assists. assists. They did run storm testing on April, storm siren testing on April 3rd. The only storm siren that didn't work properly was the one at Oklahoma Boulevard and Lane. And we had contacted, we did contact immediately to get the repairs done on that siren, make it working properly. EMS responded to 102 run requests or patients during the month of March. The financials, we've already addressed a little bit in the Finance Committee meeting. And that would be my manager's report. I would be happy to just answer any questions that you may have.
Council have any questions for Joe Don? Thank you. Item 10 is a presentation of fiscal year 2017-2018 Annual Audit by Chris Angel, Angel Johnston in Blasingame, PC. Mr. Angel is with us this evening. Dr. Haniford, did you want to start things off?
Mike, no, I'll let him.
All right.
I think he kind of hit the highlights there. In the back of the report, the very back page had the five recommendations you had last year. None of them will repeat recommendations, all of them. We cleared up, we didn't find any findings that we felt like rose to the level of issue that needed to be reported to the public in a financial report, so that's good. In the Finance Committee, they asked, is that unusual? And that is fairly unusual for us not to have a finding. So the staff has been responsive to the recommendations we've made in the past, and so things are good going forward. As a general information, financial statements, the process went well, there was good cooperation when we were here. We had some small adjustments related to inventory was probably the largest one, but that was only $20,000 or no significant adjustments to the financial statements as a whole. So that's really the, you know, we could go with numbers if we'd like, but we went over it in the Finance Committee in some detail, but maybe have any questions?
Council have any questions? Well, I do appreciate, this is our second year with, I think you're firm?
Yeah.
Is it two or three, is that?
Third.
Third, yeah. Time flies.
Yes.
I appreciate last year, I believe I was on the road and you did a, did it over the phone. And I was actually in the mountains and we'd go down and I'd lose contact. We finally got on top and you all, so I appreciate last year you doing that because we were out and about, so I appreciate that.
But yeah, we do appreciate you being here with us this evening and taking a look at our books. As council members, we depend on the audit to make sure that, you know, we are doing the things as a city that we're supposed to be doing and so.
And if later somebody has a question, we'd like to get in contact with us about anything we're happy to address, whatever might come up.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening.
Item 11 is discussion and action on the acceptance of 2017-2018 Annual Audit. Is there any discussion? Is there any action?
I'd like to make the motion to accept the audit as presented at court.
Sorry. I have the motion by Mary Hamilton, second by Bo Haniford, to accept 2017-2018 Annual Audit as presented. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 12, Public Hearing Regarding the Rehabilitation/Reconstruction of the Alva Public Swimming Pool and Possible Financing Options. As Dr. Haniford and Joe Don both mentioned, we are, as a council, trying to get prepared for the direction citizens would have us to go with regards to the pool. The estimates that we have are only estimates, but they range in order to, well, I guess a little bit of background. We've come to a spot where the Health Department had cited us for several issues with regard to the structure and the function of our pool. Looks like we'll be able, they've granted us the ability to go ahead and open this summer with about, with less than $10,000 worth of repairs to the pool, but that's contingent upon carrying out a plan to rehabilitate what we have there and bring into compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act for the bathhouse. So the estimates that we're looking at are between or in excess of $2 million to 2.5 or 6 if we rehabilitate versus build new. Estimates, of course, all of that would be out for bid and who knows what it would come in at exactly. Sometimes things come in less, sometimes things come in more than what the engineers' estimates are, but that's the scope of the project that we're looking at. The purpose here this evening is to see where the public stands on what we should do in terms of, should we have a pool? Should we not have a pool? Should we finance? Should we not finance? What, you know, in terms of getting input from the public. So at that end, I will turn it over to the public to share their thoughts. And if you feel you're fine.
Your on? Well, I think it is very nice to have a pool. And the reason being, there's lots of kids that doesn't get to go anywhere in the summer, and they get to go to the pool. And another thing is they learn to swim there. My kids learned to swim there. I never learned to swim, so it was important to me that my girls learned to swim. And so that was a real plus in my family. And I think it's important to have a pool.
Thank you. Lynn?
Well, I'm here kind of like a historical representation. It was built by the WPA, 1939. One of the foremen was some guy named Joseph H. Reed, so I have an emotional connection to the building. I would encourage somebody to look at grants to getting it declared a historical site. For a long time, it was the largest cement pool in the state of Oklahoma. Three generations grew up learning to swim there. I'm one of the old timers that I remember the tower and that was always the big thrill. I understand insurance reasons why that got removed, but. And before the meeting, Mr. Stelling said something about needing to redo the bathrooms for handicap and also something he said about a splash park. And I've heard some people complain about the splash park at Woodward, that that tends to be aimed only at younger kids. And if there are people doing four-wheel driving through the cemetery at night, maybe if the pool was open, they would not consider having other activities on their mind. So I encourage you to keep the pool, to get it repaired, and do what is ever necessary, and hopefully check into a historical grant for the building.
I'm like you, I'm old. What I'd like to know is what is the $2 million buy? I mean, what, what is the cost, the main cost to it?
So the, starting with the, this spring's $10,000, less than $10,000, $9,840, and again, these are estimates. Bougie lines and hooks, paint, labeling of the piping, recirculation, and various other equipment. Bigger ticket items are chemical analyzer, chlorine, an automatic chlorine feed system, and then repairs and modifications in the chemical ring. So altogether, those, and then some electrical conduit and things like that, altogether those are $9,000, estimated at $9,840. The biggest phase of the project would be Phase 2, as we presented it, and the engineers estimate that at $1,548,000. There's, of course, this is going to have engineering and involvement. Anytime the project gets that big, it's what it's going to be, but there, just the planning and engineering and the documentation is going to be over 100, around $125,000. The construction aspect of Phase 2 is coming in at 1.42 million. The north end, or the, yes, the north end of the pool has sunk, and so it doesn't, it doesn't come up over the gutters. And so the only place where the pool actually recirculates its own water is in the shallow end where the water comes up over the gutters. So a lot of this construction has to do with making sure that comes up to the level where the gutters work as they were designed to. $500,000 is to remove the existing gutters and replace with a stainless steel gutter. $200,000 is to replace mechanical room piping, filters, and equipment. $60,000 is to run a camera through the drain lines in order to make sure that, you know, we don't replace more than we need to and that we do replace everything we do need to. $400,000 for repairing cracks in the concrete. $150,000 for water supply lines. $40,000 is for the grout, to take out the old grout and put in new grout, seal it up. $10,000 is for a strainer. $60,000 to paint. And so that's the pool. Phase 3, some of those will be self-performed. We may, we may not have all of those items in a bid. For instance, if we paint, it probably won't cost $60,000. If we contract paint, that's what the engineers estimate to be done. The Phase 3 is going to be the bathhouse, bringing that into ADA compliance, and that's estimated at $670,000. $600,000 of that is for the actual gut and remodel and bringing things into Americans with Disabilities Act compliance. This does not presently include a splash pad in these estimates, but a splash pad, what we've had estimated to us is going to be roughly 100 grand.
Yeah, it'd be somewhere between $125,000 and $150,000 for a small child splash pad.
I'm like, you know, Winnie, I appreciate the historical value about as much as I appreciate having spent, you know, my childhood out there, learning to swim and, you know, only getting in enough trouble to be allowed still to come back the next day. But the, it's a, to me, it's a quality of life staple of our community and, but it's got a heavy, heavy price tag, so.
And that remodel, the construction and replacement of the bathhouse or remodel of the bathhouse does include salvaging any of the historic front facade that we can possibly salvage. That's one of the things I'd instructed engineers to do, is that the front part of it where it says City of Alva, 1939, that we wanted to remain. The sidewalls, we wanted to possibly remain, but anything on the interior, the way it would look, the way it is now, is subject to being replaced for ADA accessibility.
With modern technology, is there any kind of a, I realize you're going to have to show up to the other end sort of boiling and sunsetting, but is there any modern polymer thing or plastic thing that you can go in, get to concrete, to where it's smooth and something to stay on it, stable and put in a, it was such, it was sensible, I guess, a plastic pool? Or is that something that they don't believe?
The liner, the plastic pool liner wouldn't work well in this, in this, in our situation. Was not recommended. It was recommended that we go in there and resurface and regrout, and that would be the best way to keep, essentially the same pool that we've got. The liner was just, it was, it was too big. I mean, our pool's too big to have that work effectively.
And it wouldn't have, it was more expensive also. Right? Yeah.
I think we've run out of time.
We've run out of public. Dr. Pakey saves all his comments for the DNs. Council have any questions for the public? All right. Well, we do appreciate the opinions that you all have shared this evening. We also appreciate the folks that took the time to respond to the survey on Facebook. You know, largely it seems to be the consensus that, you know, people want a pool for our community, and so the message I got from the survey was, we want a pool, you guys figure out how to do it. And so that's what we're going to be working on and trying to get, to maintain as much of our heritage, what we have, you know, in design and whatnot as we can, and still move forward and meet the demands of the Health Department and DEQ. All right? Thank you all. Item 13 is to acknowledge the receipt of DEQ's permit number WW000076190195 for the rehabilitation of water wells number 64 and 66 to serve the water system Woods County, Oklahoma.
We had to apply for our water permit to upgrade the two wells that we had, that we've been working on. We received this earlier this month, or earlier in April, we received our water permit, the construction permit, and this is just a administrative matter to get recorded into the minutes that the DEQ has sent those, sent that receipt and we have received them.
I'd entertain a motion. We don't need it. Okay. Item 14 is discussion and action on electing two members to the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for three-year terms commencing July 1st, 2019, and authorized the mayor to sign the ballot. You have seen in the drop box, two letters from, where'd they go? Well, there's several. Okay, so we're.
There's two in the packet.
Two in the packet.
And I've received several after, after the packet was sent out.
Okay.
So they're in the drop box.
So we're selecting from, where's the, is there a list?
Yes, it is, it is.
49?
Yeah, there are. We have.
It's up here. Can I have the picture?
54 is the ballot.
Yeah.
Okay. So, Randy Stelling is one of those. And we are to choose two. Let me look through. Justin Battles is the Assistant City Manager and Parks and Recreation Director at Mustang. Jeremy Fraser is the City Manager at El Reno, which those two letters are in the drop box. Gerald Howery is the Town Administrator at Manford. Jeff Knapp is Vice Mayor at Bethany. Beverly McManus is the City Clerk, City Treasurer at Nicoma Park. Russ Meacham is the CFO of Perry. Kim Meek is City Manager at Duncan. Stephen Mills is City Manager at Lindsay. Vicki Patterson is City Manager at Broken Bow. Dustin Scott, the City Administrator at Marietta. Mark Skiles, City Manager at Clinton. Randy Stelling, Council Member, the only Council Member on the list. Oh, sorry, no, he's not, kind of is. But then Mark Whiner is the City Manager, drum right. The other Council Member on the list, and he's also the Vice Mayor of Bethany, is Jeff Knapp. Joe Don's going to know more of these people than I do, but I know Jeff. And I wouldn't have a problem with him serving in that capacity alongside Randy. Joe Don, do you have opinions?
No, not really. I think, obviously, we would, we would want to cast our vote for Randy Stelling, one of them. I would be, you know, I know several of these individuals. Mr. Knapp would be fine. So would Ms. Patterson as the incumbent. She's done a good job up until now. You know, wouldn't have any problem with her being on there either. But most, a lot of these folks are, they've got, they've got some municipal experience underneath their belt. And I think, you know, one of the things that we have historically tried to do, and the closest one that we would have, I believe, would be Russ Meacham, the CFO for Perry, to get somebody, you know, kind of northwest, besides Randy, more northwest representation. Perry, I think, is about the closest thing to northwest besides Alba that's there. Everything else is going to be more centrally located. Manford is the eastern side of the state. Broken Boulevard is on the eastern side of the state. Duncan, southwest. Clinton, I'd call Clinton southwest, but it's more central, central southwest. But those would be my recommendations.
I'm going to motion to elect Randy Stelling and Russ Meacham.
Second.
I have a motion from Beau Haniford and a second from Brandon Sherman to elect Randy Stelling and Russ Meacham to the Board of Trustees of the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group for three-year terms commencing July 1, 2019, and authorize the mayor to sign the ballot. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Who did you say second? I didn't hear that.
Sherman is who I got.
Haniford?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 15 is discussion in action to increase the authorized purchase cost of new Ford F-50 rescue truck off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $11,000. Go ahead.
Well, what happened here is, once we started going out, the, going out to bid and checking out state contract, the price does appear that it's going to be about $151,000 for the truck. At the last meeting, we only authorized $140,000. This leaves an $11,000 shortage. And I want to bring this to the council to have you approve that before we did anything on the truck. It's just that between when we put the budget together and then when we actually approved the purchase, prices have gone up. Is it a jump in the market? Well, when we put the budget together at $140,000 from the past year, prices have gone up. We, we'll leave a shortage in the budget that will either have to be addressed by a change order, or not a change order, but a budget amendment, or if we can find funds from within the department or from within another department inside the general fund, we will transfer those funds as an internal process and not have to do a budget amendment. But that, that is about $151,000, once we visited with the contracting people and the purchase of the truck is what it was going to take, what it's going to take. And we'll, we'll say this, if the purchase of the Ford F-50 will be done, the actual purchase will be done locally.
I'll make a motion to accursed the authorized purchase cost of new Ford F-50 rescue truck off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $11,000.
Second. A motion by Beau Haniford, second by Randy Stelling, authorizing purchase cost of new Ford F-50 rescue truck off the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract in an amount not to exceed $11,000. Is there any further discussion? My question is, is that a hard quote from?
Yes.
The chief fire safety?
Yes.
Further discussion? Please call the vote.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Item 16 is discussion in action on purchase airplane fuel from this, from Ascent Aviation for an amount not to exceed $32,000. This is, you know, just what it's going to cost to fill the tanks. The cost of the aviation fuel has gone up. It used to be that we were going to exceed the purchase limit, but because the costs have been going up pretty significantly in recent months, the airport manager has been kind of hedging things a little bit time-wise to make sure that when he purchases, he's trying to purchase as much as he can for as little as possible. And so, this is, is going to be a full truck to come and fuel, fill the tanks. And we're going to sell it all and it's going to, you know.
Come back in.
Yeah, it's going to come back in. But it's over $25,000, Joe Don's purchasing limit, so therefore, it's on the agenda for council approval. And I entertain a motion.
It's the typical turnaround time, about about a month, two months?
Typically, we buy, we have to buy fuel about every two or three months. And then, and there's plenty of money in the budget for it. That's not the issue, the issue, the only issue is that it was above my spending limit.
Well, you know, if we're sitting on that for six months, then there's a good possibility. If you're sitting on that for two weeks, it's not changing.
Yeah. And if fuel sales are what they were last month, this is two months' worth.
Okay.
Motion to approve purchase airplane fuel from Ascent Aviation for an amount not to exceed $32,000?
Second. I have a motion from Brandon Sherman and a second by Daniel Winters to purchase airplane fuel from Ascent Aviation in an amount not to exceed $32,000. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Sherman?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item 17 is discussion in action on the renewal of the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies in an amount not to exceed $31,878.27.
Same thing. This is our, our annual maintenance for our software that we keep all of our billing, utility billing, general ledger, and all of the important things that we do. This, and again, this is the cost of it. We originally paid about nine, about almost $100,000 for the software 20 years ago. This keeps us updated and current. And it gets us updates as we need them and as they are put out. Again, the only reason it is on the agenda today is because it is above my spending limit of $25,000. At $31,878.27.
Counsel, have any questions? Not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve the renewal of the annual software maintenance agreement with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $31,878.27.
Second. I have a motion by Daniel Winters and a second by Brandon Sherman to renew the annual software maintenance agreements with Tyler Technologies for an amount not to exceed $31,878.27. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item 18, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Citizens with public comments, we've limited to two minutes per speaker, and we ask that the speaker please identify himself or herself.
My name is Jewel Wadu. I live at 420 12th Street. And I appreciate the fact that some of these homes or houses, dwellings, whatever we want to call them, have been demolished to make our town look a little better. There is one on Flynn Street that I would like to see demolished and it's between 918 Flynn and 932 Flynn. And it is very shabby looking. And that's one of our main streets through our town. And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? Item 19 is remarks and inquiries by council members.
When there's been a fire, how long do they have to clean up the stuff that they pull out of the house? I mean, can they just leave it in the front yard for weeks or do they have? Is there a set time?
I don't know that there's a set time limit on the cleanup. But obviously, if it's starting to get to be a nuisance, we want to try to address it.
Any other comments or remarks from the council? Okay, well, the city council meeting is adjourned. And we'll call to order the Alba Utility Authority Regular Meeting. Angela, come on here, would you please call the roll?
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is a swearing-in ceremony for Kelly Parker, Chairman, Melody Thiedman, Clerk, Connor Martin, Ward 1, Seat 2, Brandon Sherman, Ward 2, Seat 2, Mary Hamilton, Ward 3, Seat 2, and Randy Stelling, Ward 4, Seat 2. Can you do it from here?
Yep.
We are this way. You all want to just stand wherever you're at. We'll just sit that way and you can, if you're ready. We'll just administer that once through accident. If you raise your right hands, do these you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma and that you will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing to the performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to your office other than the compensation allowed by law? And do you further swear or affirm you will faithfully discharge your duties for which you've been elected to the best of your ability? I do. Item four is discussion in action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 18, 2019. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of March 30, 2019. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $96,476.94 and payroll expenses of $72,140.25. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Daniel Winters and a second by Brandon Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
We'll adjourn the Utility Authority meeting and call to order the Economic Development Authority meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Winters?
Here.
Martin?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Sherman?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Haniford?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three, swearing-in ceremony for Kelly Parker, Chairman, Melody Thiedman, Clerk, Connor Martin, Ward 1, Seat 2, Brandon Sherman, Ward 2, Seat 2, Mary Hamilton, Ward 3, Seat 2, and Randy Stelling, Ward 4, Seat 2. This is it. If you raise your right hand, do these you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma and that you will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly any money or other valuable thing for performance or non-performance of any act or duty pertaining to your office other than the compensation allowed by law? Do you further swear or affirm you faithfully discharge your duties for which you've been elected to the best of your ability? I do. Item four, discussion in action on the consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of March 18, 2019. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of March 30, 2019. Item C, approval of claims in the amount of $27,091.22 and payroll expenses of $13,155.17. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. I have a motion by Daniel Winters and a second by Brandon Sherman to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Mar, Martin?
Yes.
Haniford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
We're adjourned. Thank you, guys and gals.